Welcome to our February Board of Education meeting. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll start the roll call, starting from my far left. Mr. Scott Asher, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Ms. Laura Newman, Associate Superintendent of Business Operations. Ms. Dana Schultz, Board Trustee, is joining us remotely today. Dr. Bill Hender, Board Vice President. Dr. Jordan Cox, Superintendent. Myself, Steve Hartman, Board President. To my right, Ms. Sue Homer, Board Trustee. Mr. Tim Russo, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Ms. Mary Harvey, District Counsel. And Ms. Debbie Verga, District Clerk. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Cox for our administrative report.
Good evening, everyone. So we have a number of items on this evening's agenda. We have a few community updates. We will be providing an update on armed security in terms of a timeline and next steps. We have some policy updates that we'd like to share with you this evening. Looking forward to our elementary state of the district presentation. And then we will finish up this evening's board meeting with some committee updates before we do board business. So I'm actually going to turn it over to Mr. Russo to kick us off.
Thank you, Dr. Cox. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. As Dr. Cox mentioned, we have a pretty wonderful agenda tonight, a chance to celebrate some of the great things we do at a bunch of different levels. But we're going to start off just quickly. Our major community update right now is that we're starting to get our materials together for registration for our summer programs, our Cougar Sports Camp, our music program, and of course, our Discovery Camp. Look for registration information in the coming weeks so we can get that out and get people registered. And we're looking forward to a great summer again with opportunities for students throughout the district to take part in some really wonderful programs. So thank you. Thank you all for that. We're looking forward to that. And then I will turn it over for now to Ms. Newman for -- or to Dr. Inforna first for our policy update.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Russo. So I always like to start with a little bit of the why and set the context. So back in 2019, the board put a ton of effort and time into redoing its policy book. And we've been on this multi-year endeavor to keep it as up-to-date as possible. And we have a number of ways in how we do that. Primarily, we have our Bosse's Policy Services that provides recommendations. Then internally, our administrators review. We have a committee that reviews. And our legal team reviews. And that allows us to bring to the board policies that have been recommended to us, vetted by our own internal people. And then we can provide recommendations to the board for updates. So as part of the audit last month, or sorry, two months ago, in December, we updated our policies in the 1,000 and the 3,000 series. Tonight, we're presenting to the board a number of policies. It feels like about, you know, 20 or 30 or so that have updates related to -- I meant that seriously. This is about 20 or 30 or so. So a number of policies related to our 5,000 series, which is non-instructional business and operations, and our 6,000 series, which is personnel. In the future, you know, I said it last time, and I mean it, you know, it's kind of Mike's wishlist, you know, maybe in March, we can, you know, get the 7,000 and 8,000 series in, but we have time in April, May, June, maybe, if we need it. Because it is, you know, quite a bit of work and well worth doing the work. So with that, what I'm going to do is there's about six or seven slides that follow the presentation that outline whether the policy is legally required. Do we currently have one? Why is it being updated? Is it a rewrite? Is it a deletion, et cetera? So what I'll do is just provide a generalization for each slide rather than going through each one. You know, our staff here, the board, you know, certainly have had some time to see these. So, you know, it's meant to be kind of more of an overview for, you know, the board now. So with that, we have our first couple of policies here related to the 5,000 series. You know, three out of the four of these are revisions, and a lot of those revisions are legally based. And if you looked at the why, you'll see, you know, it talks about this law, that law, whatever it may be. But I will point out that the contingency budget policy that we've had for a couple of years now is being deleted. And that's because what our Policy Services folks do is they look about how they can combine policies or streamline language. So it's not that we don't have anything related to contingency. It's just being put into another policy, and it makes sense to live there. In the next set of four related to non-instructional business and operations, again, you can see which ones are legally required and not. All are policies that we've had. And all are policies, again, you know, we're talking about non-instructional business and we're talking about personnel tonight. There were a lot of legal updates, you know, strictly things that changed in the law that require us to do these updates. Next set of four, whether we're talking about the school safety plans, you know, school bus safety, information security, breach and notification, all are updates made because of changes of whether it be state, federal law, or commissioner regulations. You could see two have, you know, redlining revisions that are, you know, simple, others were complete rewrites. And when we do complete rewrites, it's not because there was anything necessarily bad about the old policy. It's just a lot of stuff got updated, and it was much easier to rewrite than it was to, you know, strike 90% of the text and, you know, keep going. And then the last two for this, again, same format. You could see here, two policies related to, you know, buses. And again, you can see the why. And although we contract out, there's language in the policies related to how it pertains to the district when you contract out. So there was about, you know, four, eight, 10 policies there related to the 5,000 series. You know, Dr. Cox, we could pause here for the 5,000 if the board has questions, then goes on, or we can keep going and do questions at the end. Anybody? Any thoughts? No? Keep going? All right. So then we go to personnel. 6,000 series, same format. This does have a legally required policy, equal employment opportunity, three revisions, couple of rewrites, and all these are really just based on updates to laws and regulations. And the next four policies, whether we're talking about certification qualifications, registration, CTE hours, incidental teaching, or probation and tenure, all are related to updates to the law and what, whether it be state or federal, requires that we follow. In this last part of the 6,000 series, you could see three policies. The use of district email was a rewrite. That's because it hasn't been rewritten in so long. And there's been a lot of changes and updates related to privacy laws and how to use email and, you know, proper use of email. So that was a rewrite. But you can also see here temporary personnel and leave of absence, again, related to law. And then the last two in the 6,000 series about determining employment status and then also about the retirement of, I'm sorry, employment of retired persons. That one was an update because, as we know, there was a waiver, and you can make more than the $35,000. And there was numbers in that policy, $30,000, $35,000. We just reverted it so that it wasn't, we didn't have to change it every time there was a dollar change, you know? So essentially, that was the complete change in that one. So I know a little quick, a lot there, but we've had some time to look at it before. A lot of people vetted it. You know, some great work by the whole team. Thank you very much. With that, questions from the board, if any?
Thank you, Dr. Inforna.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Inforna. I know, you know, this is Yeoman's work here and making sure that our policies are up to date and consistent throughout is really just vitally important. And not having to do it all in one year like we used to is much appreciated.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Doc. So at this point, we are going to have Mrs. Newman talk a little bit about an update to our potential COMAC model for armed security. We did receive a number of proposals back. I'm not going to try and steal Mrs. Newman's thunder with how many that is because it's part of the slide. So Mrs. Newman, if you could give us an update on the potential model and where we are with the vendors and what are some of our next steps?
Sure. And again, it is a very quick update just to let the board where we are in the process. As you'll recall, we released an RFP approximately a month or so ago. Those RFPs were due back in district last Friday, February 7th. I'm happy to report that we had seven, I'm sorry, we had five proposals. And that's a good thing because the more proposals, sometimes when we put RFPs or bids out, you may only get one proposal back or two proposals back. So very encouraged that we had a total of five different vendors put in their plans, thoughts for the district. We are in the process now of reviewing those five proposals. Some of the things that we're looking at, the rubric was included in the RFP, so every vendor that submitted a proposal knows exactly what the district would be grading and looking for. Some, just to give the board an idea, first, cost. Unlike a bid where you are bound by lowest responsible bidder, a request for proposals, that is not the only criteria. It is part of it. And when you think about it, in this instance, a professional service, you don't necessarily want the lowest bidder, certainly in regard to something as important as this particular item. So that is a piece of it, but not the overriding majority. An implementation plan, so some of the things that we'll be looking for is can they meet COMAC's schedule? Can they be ready to go when we're looking for that to happen? Their staffing plans. What happens in the case of absences? How will that vendor or that company backfill if necessary? Training is key in this area. So we're looking at what is the initial training for the potential guards and what is the ongoing training for those guards? When it comes to understanding COMAC's needs, did they have a good sense in their responses of what it is that we are looking for? Can they meet those expectations? Do they have experience in the K-12 sector? That's something that will be vitally important to us as we go through that process. And then demonstrating in their responses, how do they and can they mitigate issues that may arise based on their previous experiences with other districts? Certainly, we'll be doing reference checks. There are a number of districts that have employed armed guards previously, and we'll be reaching out for them as well. The plan moving forward is, once that review is completed, we will be bringing forth the top candidates to the board. They'll be meeting in exec session February 27th. And then we would expect the successful vendor will be making a public presentation at our March 6th meeting.
Any questions from the board before we move on to our next slide regarding armed security?
Two questions. One, will the board be provided the rubric before the February 27th meeting?
Absolutely. We can send that home tomorrow for you.
Okay. Thank you. And on the March 6th meeting, will it have to be board action to appoint that vendor? Or is it just going to be rolled into the budget for '25, '26?
It would, moving forward, be in the '25, '26.
But there's no board action needs to get taken at the --
It does not have to be done at that time if the board would not wish so.
Yeah, as long as it's in the budget, it's fine. I just didn't know if there's any kind of motion we need to make on that meeting.
That would be up to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next slide, I would like to invite Ms. DeRienzo to share with us a little bit about our elementary state of the district. Now, I know that we can't share all of what's going on in the elementary because we'd be here for quite some time, but we want to share, at the beginning of the year, we did highlight a number of programs that we were piloting this year. And we'd love to hear an update on how those programs are progressing. So, Ms. DeRienzo, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for having us. And I'm here speaking on behalf of our elementary team who are sitting behind me.
We can't hear you. All right. Community at home.
We're not ready for that yet. So it's very exciting. We have, we've been able to accomplish a lot in our elementary buildings. And tonight, we want to focus and really reflect on all of the opportunities that we've added this year in terms of enrichment. So we have a number of different enrichment opportunities, one of which is brand new this year, is our primary lunch and learn. And our primary lunch and learn program is run currently by one of our librarians from Wood Park, Krista Myers. And she's been rotating around each of the primary buildings to provide students with an opportunity to really explore and collaborate and problem-solve in different ways, in like no-stress environments with all sorts of different activities and challenges. And it's really been wonderful to watch the students thrive, but also find ways to work together, working with students that they might not have worked with on a regular basis. So we have a short little video.
Hi, I am Cheryl Toll, and I am the Computer Technology TA at Wood Park Primary School. Lunch and Learn is an enrichment program that we have here at our primary schools. And it allows our students in first and second grade to come into the library during recess to do STEAM activities such as our snowball catapult and our mitten holders. Our students created their own design for their mitten holder. And then, once they created their design, they did a table talk with their friends, and they created their own mitten holder by compromising their great ideas into one. I think that the students really think outside the box, and they actually apply strategies and create wonderful designs and creativity to all these activities. And it really shows that they are so smart in every single way.
So we work together with a number of our librarians in studying what the curriculum is in first and second grade and chose activities that were both thematic for the time of year. So they change every four weeks, and each of our students in the primary buildings get that experience. And we just keep rotating across the year, and it's been a lot of fun to explore the activities with them. So that leads into something that might be a little familiar to us in our intermediate enrichment program, which we've had for a number of years now and continues to thrive and grow. And I wanted to just highlight a couple of the examples of some of the things that they're doing. These pictures here are from Burr, who are led by Nicole Ryback, the enrichment teacher over at Burr. And in these pictures, it was wonderful to be part of because the students were learning how to code music. So using code.org, they were having the opportunity to really develop their own music. And the kids were so excited, they were ready to go home, they were, you know, sharing their music with each other, dancing in the classroom. And it was a really, you know, they got it immediately, and it was just a neat opportunity for them. Over at Sawmill, this might be a familiar experience for some of you, but this is one example of some of the enrichment opportunities led by Mrs. Persicelli over at Sawmill. The annual Beaver Boatyard and Boat Brigade, where the students get an opportunity to design and challenge themselves to problem-solve yet again. We use the term failing forward a lot so that students really get the idea that they're not, they're not being told what to do. The kids are given the opportunities to explore and really, you know, just problem-solve. If their boat doesn't work well, what are they going to do next time? And in addition to that, at both Burr and Sawmill, kids get opportunities with things like solar cars, different kinds of Lego robotics, hot air balloons, you know, you could be hit by just about anything, walking through the hallways at any given moment. But the kids always leave each of these rooms with big smiles and excited opportunities so that they can continue to explore some of their ideas. New this year, really exciting, in each of our primary buildings, is we've added tower gardens. So again, taking from something that we've had in the intermediate schools and bringing it down to the primary level. We've had the opportunity in working with Letty Algieri and Plant Up through Bosse's to add a tower garden in each of our primary buildings. So we have had a lot of fun. Our second-grade classrooms have each had the chance, or will have the chance by the end of the year, to share the responsibility from, at the beginning of the year, we had second graders actually building, physically building those tower gardens and all the different parts. They all had, they all had a job from, you know, setting up the lights and the water and the fertilizer for the plants. It was really cool. And when we first got to turn it on for the first time, they were just shocked by the brightness of the light, but just overwhelmed by what they were able to do in one 40-minute period. So every eight weeks, we have a new planting cycle. So the students get to harvest, and we see Mr. Simpson there harvesting, and some of the teachers over at Wood Park with their giant salad bowls, where students have had the opportunity to take what they've grown and bring it home and try new things, from arugula, which many of them just had fun saying, to basil, to bib lettuce. And, you know, it's been a lot of fun to watch them learn all the different, you know, content areas, seeing those content areas coming together in different ways. And learning opportunities has been a lot of fun.
Can I just pause for a second?
Yeah.
And I think these pictures really do capture. I know you have a number of slides that you're still going to go through, but when you think about some of the things like the lunch and learn, and you can, when you look at those pictures of those students, and you look at these tower gardens, and you're looking at enrichment, which has been here, but it just keeps getting better and better with some of the activities. Our children in the elementary school, they enter, and they have such curiosity, and they, and learning through discovery and exploration is really a big part of being a five-year-old or a four-year-old, you know, that they spend most of their time, you know, whether it's working on Legos, we know that because a lot of times I find myself stepping on them. But when you look at these pictures, I think one of the most rewarding things as a board, as a community, as a district, is when you look at these faces, including Mr. Simpson right there in the bottom picture, and you look at those smiles, and you see the parents on the, you know, the left being involved. Because of a program that we brought in, because of a vision that we have in this district to really promote these authentic learning activities from the high school all the way down to the elementary school, and see it come to life with the smiles on their faces, is the most rewarding feeling, being a part of this administrative team and the staff here in COMAC. So kudos to the staff who have made this come to life and the administration who have found time to, you know, implement some of these crazy ideas that we have into the daily routine. And thank you, Mr. Simpson, as well, for being a big part of this and picking, what were you picking, Mr. Simpson? Was that basil or is?
I did keep some of the basil.
You did keep some of the basil.
Yeah, it was good. It's very tasty.
So I just wanted to point out, like, these, you know, picture says a thousand words. And to see those smiles is just an amazing feeling because, you know, before last year, we didn't have tower gardens at the elementary school. We didn't have lunch and learn. And I know we're going to talk a little bit about our agricultural program. We own a farm that we brought back to life. It's incredible. So thank you for capturing these pictures. Brett, Adam, I know you're throughout the district, you know, running around, taking all of these professional photos and capturing these candid moments. So it really, it says a lot, so.
And I think it's something that we've had the tower gardens at Burr and Sawmill, and it's interesting because you think, okay, are they just, do they just keep growing lettuce? Like, are we just constantly doing that? We had one student who came to Mrs. Persicelli and said, "I would like a strawberry." And so she researched, and next thing we know, we had strawberries. And they, you know, little trial and error here or there, there might have only been one strawberry that was successfully grown. But that student that had requested it, he enjoyed that strawberry very much. So it's been fun for the students to see how vertical gardening, too, has been something that's been adopted in many different areas across the country as a way to, you know, as a food source. So it's been really cool. And as we, as Dr. Cox mentioned, we talk about the farm. And last year, another crazy idea, let's grow cabbages. Let's see what we can do with cabbages. And students planted seeds and grew seedlings in the classrooms at Sawmill and Burr. Next thing you know, their little seedlings were planted, and Jackson Cobb up in the top right corner successfully won the contest for the largest cabbage at 18.3 pounds. So who knew? And we actually did unearth the original picture of him with the little seedling he planted, that it was going to become even bigger than that picture. But he, his smile there, as well as all the students, we got to connect with the apiary, you know, it's just seeing everything come to fruition. And when the students are doing these activities, yeah, they seem fun. It seems like a field trip, and, you know, they're doing all this work. But we've been able to successfully integrate so many content areas into the work that they're doing. So the students are measuring, you know, they're journaling, they're thinking about science, they're thinking about math, and they're bringing all their skills together in real-world opportunities. And that has been, I think, the most exciting part. Like Dr. Cox mentioned, you know, we're really bringing the fun into learning every chance we get. Additionally, this past year, libraries, we're really working on the libraries in the elementary buildings and, you know, not librarians so much as library media specialists now. And these library and media specialists have taken on a lot of challenges this year as we challenged them to incorporate more technology and STEAM work in their lessons. So now the students are learning, you know, some screen-free coding and some coding on-screen integrated into library and media sciences. So we've brought in, in the primary buildings, B-bots. So students are, have these little bumblebees that they can code, and they're doing great activities. A little librarians have been doing a fantastic job connecting them to books and reading. We've also added something called a Makey Makeys in the primary buildings, where the students get to play around with music. And in the intermediate buildings, you'll see these little mazes. They're used for Ozobots, tiny little robots. Kids get to code with colored markers and things. In addition to Dash robots, which the students are, you know, really enjoying, they're just getting started with some of that work. We've added iPads into the libraries so that it helps us do this work as well. And the librarians are really working to integrate computer science standards as part of their library standards and part of their regular work. So it's been a very exciting time in the elementary buildings with all of this work. And I want to thank the Board of Education for supporting some of our crazy ideas, but it really has been a phenomenal opportunity for us, for the teachers, and for the students to really learn in different ways. So we're really focusing in the elementary buildings in integrating content areas into all things so that the more connections we can help our students make, the deeper understanding they will develop. So another, I'm just going to invite Ms. Paliam to speak about another fantastic enhancement
Thank you, everyone. It is my pleasure to come up here and speak a little bit about technology in the elementary level. As you know, I love to talk my technology. So before I get into a little bit about the Discovery Den pilot and what we're doing with that, I would like to say that it has been such an unbelievable pleasure to watch our primary and intermediate students now be able to interact with their touchscreen Chromebooks. So, you know, I thank the board for that support and, you know, everyone from the team, to the teachers, to the buildings, to having that happen quickly. We now have touchscreen in all of those grades, and to see the kids and be able to get there and see how they're interacting with their coursework, the math especially, it really is, you know, an absolute game changer for them, and they love it. So they love the new Chromebook, so I wanted to give that a little shout out first. What is a Discovery Den? So the Discovery Den, in its most simplistic form, is basically a rebranded version of an old-school computer lab, right? So you think about, you went into a computer lab when you were in school, and you went into a room that had 30 desktops in it, and you sat down, and you had a mouse, and you had a screen, and, you know, you did some type of coursework on there, and everybody was working on the same thing at the same time with a teacher telling everybody where the keys were. And now, in 2025, it is imperative that we are teaching how to use technology differently. So while there is an indefinite need for kids to still know how to use a keyboard and a mouse and a desktop and to know what that is, to have them navigate all different types of technologies, be able to interact, be able to create content, even as young as kindergarten, has become really their bread and butter. This is what these kids love to do, right? So we have worked very hard at changing over and working toward changing that paradigm on what does technology look like in our primary and intermediate schools. And we started that this year primarily with our pilot Discovery Den in Northridge. And here are some photos of what happens in the Discovery Den. It is a wonderful, active place for students to come and, you know, be themselves and interact with technology. Everything that we do has a purpose. Philosophically, you know, as a technology director, I don't believe that kids should just use technology because it's there. I don't believe that kids should just use technology because it's there. It should have a meaningful purpose. And that is everything that you see that's happening in a Discovery Den. So everything that they're doing with coding, robotics, they're taking virtual field trips. In October and November, we went to virtual field trips to pumpkin patches and all those different things that are kind of seasonally appropriate. We have a new platform called Quiver. We're in there using augmented reality. All of that augmented reality does tie into the curriculum as well. They could do like a life cycle of a plant in augmented reality. They're doing content creation during Thanksgiving. You know, again, I have to give a shout out to the Northridge Library Media Specialist Christine Dennis because she has come up with all of these amazing, innovative and creative things for our students to be doing. But they did an unboxing of a Thanksgiving dinner, and they had to pull out everything from their Thanksgiving dinner box and say how they would cook it and what they would do with it and how, you know, how they would use it. And it was adorable. That's what they're doing up there in the upper right-hand corner. And they had the green screen in an actual kitchen. And it's teaching them skills, but with a purpose, right? So, you know, we have our new typing program. They're utilizing, you know, that in the Discovery Den. And the Discovery Den is basically a place where they can go and work in stations. So all twenty kids are not working on the same thing at the same time. They're all working in separate stations. Some of them are interacting with different types of robotics. Some of them are taking, like I said, virtual field trips. We have been working with the two different new coding programs that we are exploring on that primary level. They're doing pixel art. They're doing lots of different things in there that are really different and innovative away from the standard, you know, computer lab that we all knew when we were kids. So that has been a wonderful new kind of enhancement for our primary buildings in particular. We're looking forward to continuing to grow this program and see how it, you know, manifests itself. The kids, I mean, I walk through the building and they're begging to go in there. So it really is a wonderful experience for them. So.
Thank you. So we'd just like to thank everybody. And on behalf of both the principals and the teachers in the primary and intermediate buildings, it's been a pretty fantastic year. So thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask the board if they have any questions related to our elementary state of the district before we get into our committee reports.
All right. So I may have a few questions for a friend.
For a friend?
A few things in the elementary world that I am always looking to learn more about. With the primary lunch and learns, how often do they get to go to the lunch and learn activity?
So students in first and second grade get to go once a month. So once every four weeks in each of the buildings.
Excellent. Let's see. Another question for a friend. Let's see here. I was happy to hear about the CSDF standards, Computer Science Digital Fluency Standards, being implemented within the library. Are they being implemented within the classroom as well?
Yes. And we've been doing a deep dive with some of our curriculum writing work as well. And so we've been trying to connect different opportunities for students to explore some of those standards, just as part of their regular classroom curriculum.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Paliam. My daughter now tells me she has a better Chromebook than I do because she can touch hers and it's better than daddy's. My question, though, is in terms of artificial intelligence. And, you know, at the primary and intermediate level, there's been different programs that have been introduced in some school districts. And there are different philosophies and different ways in terms of, are we looking at, have we looked at, have we done anything with any of the AI stuff for our younger learners at this point?
So at this point, primarily for students, the focus has been at the high school. We did, we are in a pilot program with Brisk Boost at this time for use with those, with that platform at the high school level. I am actually, right after the break, the week after the break, I am running a PD for elementary teachers K through five for the use of artificial intelligence or AI on the part of the teacher for some of our district platforms. And part of that training is also going to be understanding the platforms that we already have that have AI embedded into them already. You know, clearly, they have, you know, we have Canva district-wide. They can create, I mean, I'm working with a teacher right now where he's having, the kids are writing a story and then they get to make the pictures in Canva that go along with that story. So they're, you know, they're AI-generated photos. So, you know, I am someone that is really active in my field when it comes to this particular, specific topic. And it's definitely something that I have been working. We did start, you know, at the high school, you know, for obvious reasons. And it is definitely something that, you know, as the course of the year goes on, I am looking to continue to bring down.
Great. Thank you. And the Discovery Den, who leads the Discovery Den in terms of, is it a teacher? Is it the classroom teacher? How does that work?
So we have to think of the Discovery Den more as an innovative space, right? So who leads it? Anybody can lead it during the time that they're using it. So the library media specialist, when they're doing their work, so if they're doing a lesson that has to do with computer science or digital fluency, and they want to use the Discovery Den because it's got more amenities, per se, than, let's say, what they have in the library, more space for them to spread out and do certain things, they certainly can. The technology TA, they are using that space for a lot of their work and things that they are doing. As these spaces grow, it is my goal to say that, okay, a teacher's working on a specific project, and now they want to use, let's say, the green screen in the Discovery Den as an add-on. So really, it is a space, the same way that any teacher or anybody could come and use the computer lab, any teacher can come and use the Discovery Den. But I would say primarily at this point, it is used by the library media specialist or the technology TA.
And we have those currently, I know, at Northridge. Do we have plans?
I actually just walked the district with Frank Pelopoli the other day to look at the other labs. So those spaces are there. And it's just about pulling the PCs out of them and kind of just reimagining the space. So they, all of the buildings have, like, what you see up here. They all have the green screen, they all have the robots, they all have access to all of these programs for the virtual field trips. It's just the process of renovating those spaces by, you know, by September, getting them kind of just looking a little bit more like flexible spaces. Whereas right now, they're like fixed labs. That will be happening for the start of the school year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is from Ms. Schultz. She just wanted to thank you for giving our littlest learners these valuable hands-on, real-world experiences.
Thank you.
Just a question following up about the Marion Col Farm. Back in the memory presentation, the gigantic cabbage. And I think we were, especially with Ms. Newman's favorite time of year approaching. Are we looking towards expanding that program next year?
Actually, there's students just in the past, I think some students at Burr are going to be planting their seeds in the classroom tomorrow. And some students in Sawmill just planted last week. So they are looking forward to going back out there and trying to, what was it, eighteen pounds, maybe grow a cabbage bigger than eighteen pounds. So they're excited. And it carries over two years because they're third graders when they start the program. And so they continue it into fourth grade into the fall when they harvest.
Great. Thank you. And again, I have the board, both of you, great work. I mean, we hear about all the excellent programs we have at the middle school and high school. And it's great to have the opportunity to shine what goes on with our, like Ms. Schultz said, our little learners, but they learn a lot at that age. So.
And we couldn't do it without the building leadership. They are the ones running the bus every day. So.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Paliam, and thank you, Ms. DiLorenzo.
Thank you both again. And again, thank you also, as we go through all of these state of the districts, the things we're able to do from a curriculum and instruction standpoint. Tremendous thank you to the board for their support. Dr. Cox for his vision. As we said, the district leadership team is able to kind of put some of these things in place. It's mysterious that our building leadership. But most importantly, to our teachers for what you do day-to-day with our students. I always think about how, I don't want to say easy, but how easy it felt like it used to be, right? As a teacher, when you had like a canned curriculum or something to deliver to kids. But when you're the teacher out in front of the room with new ideas and learners that are looking for this incredibly entertaining experience, it's a challenge. And the ability that our teaching staff has here to figure out a way to do just what we keep talking about, right? We talk about the foundation of our youngest learners. But what we try to talk about all the time is that the time here shouldn't be this dress rehearsal, as Dr. Cox says, it should be an experience. And our teachers really, day-to-day, create those experiences for our kids. So I truly thank all of you as well because, as we said, there's a lot of unbelievable things going on. It takes up a lot, a lot of time. And somehow, you're able to figure out ways to deliver that curriculum but give our kids this really, really meaningful learning experience that carries on for a long time. So thank you all. So we'll move on to committee reports, I believe. And Mr. Hartman, legislative advocacy up first.
Thank you, Ms. Russo. So again, Legislative Advocacy Committee, again, formed by the Board of Education, which is made up of students and community members itself. And again, you can see on the screen the different areas we're focusing on this year. And certainly, we're looking forward to the trip at the midpoint of March to go up there and talk to our legislators. So certainly, it's coming close. And we'll have a next, a bigger update, our next meeting in March.
Me again. I'm here for the Technology Steering Committee update. So all subcommittees have met, some of us have met twice. So the Instructional Technology Subcommittee did meet twice since our last large meeting. Everybody has a very clear laser focus on lots of the things that everybody's in the committee looking to do. So the Instructional Technology Subcommittee has been exploring an elementary coding program through the piloting codable through the rest of the year. Our last meeting, Special Education Director Severina was with us, talking a lot about differentiation and how we have so many different platforms that we have and to give a little bit more resources to the teachers on how to use those platforms for differentiation. So her and I are collaborating on creating some resources for some of our K-12 platforms to show and help guide teachers on how to use them for differentiation. You know, we have a lot of different resources for parents. We were talking about how to get them out there. We now have the YouTube channel for Comac Technology. The Infrastructure Technology Subcommittee has been talking about ways to leverage some state funds to do some infrastructure upgrades. And we have some really exciting things that we're looking into doing. Dr. Inforna has been working with Brett Malamud on some parent square enhancements that we're looking to potentially do next year with absence reporting. So the whole committee is going to be meeting again in late March, early April to just all debrief on our findings from the Subcommittee and talk about some next steps moving forward.
Thank you. And our last report is our Multicultural Committee.
So I am part of the International Cultural Society as a way to connect with my peers at Comac High School. It's a group of accepting students who want to learn about each other's culture while also growing their relationship with their own. We learn about culture in a fun, but also informative way. And we have a group of many dedicated students.
The International Cultural Society is a club where we engage in learning and fostering for different cultures around the world. For example, I'm from Colombia. So I always get to share about my culture, like food, coffee, especially coffee.
International club is really important for me because it gives us the opportunity for to share and to learn about other people's background and nationalities. Because, you know, when we're learning about it, it's like really important and interesting.
For me, celebrating culture is important because you get to know where you're from, in a sense. For me, once again, I'm Colombian, and I've lived here in the US my whole life. But I want to thank my parents for always fostering culture in the environment I grew up. Everything was always in Spanish, music, TV. Whenever I talked with people about, like, anything in general, or whenever I learned about my culture as well, it was always in Spanish and around the topic of Spanish. And that has always stuck with me.
Celebrating the culture, it provides us to understand enjoyment, to promote the respect and harmony among people and communities.
In my life, I was raised with mixed religion. And I think that played a role in my curiosities in other cultures. So I have always been interested in the cultures of my friends. At Comac High School, but as well as on Long Island, we have a great melting pot of many different students from different backgrounds. And I have always found interest in the music, in the food, and language, which is also a part of the identity of someone's culture.
I think the multicultural festival in April is important to attend because, well, here we could, we could share the different cultures in our community. Learning about cultures is important because you don't forget where you're from. If you forget where you're from, you're really losing a big aspect of yourself. And you can't pass it on to the next generation.
At the multicultural festival, we have tables set up, each displaying different cultures from around the world. Some even have a mix of all of them together. Like, I remember my friends did a table about bread last year from all different countries.
So one of the things we wanted to highlight, obviously, our multicultural festival coming up in April. But beyond that, these students, this presentation was part of our Burr Bugle. And just to highlight, you know, during the month of January, our intermediate schools did their cultural festivals and had opportunities for students to share various elements of their background and their culture. So just very cool time. And like I said, we've kind of taken the multicultural festival and with just the multicultural committee and really have made it really very much a student-driven event. And they're doing an incredible job with it. So thank you to them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. And just last highlight, our upcoming board presentation in March is the most wonderful time of the year, right, Mrs. Newman? It's Budget Workshop Number One. So we're looking forward to presenting the first part of our sequence of budget workshops.
Thank you. And it's early. It's March 6th, though. Mark your calendars, everybody. Fun begins here in HUBS in March. March Madness, as Ms. Newman calls it. March Madness, all the budget meetings. There you go. All righty. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the great presentations. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hender to read our Board of Education statement.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Our board meeting has two opportunities for public comment. One where the public can comment on specific agenda items only, and one at the end of the meeting where the public can comment on other school district matters. Please take a white card if you have a question on specific agenda items and a green card if you have comments during public participation on other school matters. Comments must be no longer than three minutes. The district clerk will call each person up by number. We are monitoring the time and will let speakers know when their time is completed. When called up to the microphone, please state your name and whether you are a district resident. Please only speak to the board directly. The board appreciates the community's feedback. These commentary periods are not times for public debate or for answering specific questions where a direct answer cannot be provided. We will make a note of any questions where the answer is not known and provide a response as soon as possible to the person asking the question. Public comment does not allow for positive or negative statements about a specific employee as it relates to his or her job performance. Any matters related to specific students will not be discussed. The president shall terminate the right of any speaker if they are overly lengthy, repetitive, disruptive, disrespectful to anyone and/or offensive, as well as if the public becomes unruly and lacks respect for others. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hender. With that, I'll turn it over to our district clerk, Ms. Debbie Fergo, to call up any public comment on specific agenda items only.
That would be, if anyone has a white card, that would be white card number one.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Goldstein. I'm a resident, and I have two sons in the district. I just wanted to start by saying thank you to the board and to the teachers in Comac for everything that they do, for not only the parents and the students, but for the community as well. I wanted to bring up a topic that has been brought up before. And since it's budget season, I know now is better time than any. I think that we have all seen the success of the full-time inclusion models in the intermediate schools. And I would love to open a conversation about putting them in the primary levels full-time as well. It has been shared over the past few years that students come into the district, they have a lot more needs. And that, with that being said, I think supporting them inside the classroom with two consistent teachers full-time every day is important and should be considered as a possibility for next year. Being a teacher in that setting, as well as having a child in that setting currently in the intermediate building, I see how successful it can be and truly hope that you would consider changing this model at the primary levels. In closing, I just wanted to reiterate, I appreciate all the work everyone is doing, from the aides to the support staff, to the teachers, the principals, and the board, and beyond. I am truly grateful that you listen and you take the time to do the research and make changes that are necessary for our children. It's about giving every student of every ability, every opportunity possible to be a Comac champion. Thank you.
Thank you.
White card number two.
Moving on to our agenda, I'm going to acknowledge the correspondences as listed. All of them were written, both written correspondences, as well as I like to note, I thank Dr. Cox I thank Dr. Cox because he did take the time to speak to people who also had concerns that came through many of these correspondences. In addition, we'll move on to the donation section. So, be resolved that the board accept on behalf of the district donations by the following to be applied as requested. And be further resolved, the district will deposit these funds as listed. And be further resolved, the board authorizes increase as necessary to list the budget codes for the use of these funds. A donation from the Box Tops for Education, from the Francis R. Wise Family Trust, from the Comac Booster Club Center Stage, as well as Frank Palmetary. Can I get a motion, please? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On behalf of the district, the Board of Education wanted to thank all these people for the most generous donations and we will definitely appreciate this going forward. All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the January 9th, 2025 Board of Education meeting?
Motion.
First by Ms. Schultz, second by Dr. Hender. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda? Can I get a second? Okay. So, we do have two people I want to recognize for tenure this evening. Dr. Santorello, who I've known for many years here. Congratulations on your tenure. Very well deserved. As well as, in the audience, Mr. Benjamin Huckman, who are music teachers as well. Congratulations. Little bit of, again, sad announcements to say that we do have a few retirees that are coming up this coming year. So, we do want to acknowledge all the retirees and stand up to be acknowledged for all your years of dedication to Comac School District if you're here tonight. I know you don't want to stand up, Mrs. Ream, but we know you're there. No one wants.
And Ms. Cardenas.
And Ms. Cardenas there too. Please stand and be acknowledged. Greatly appreciate all your years of service.
I think Mr. Murray's back there too.
Where's Mr. Murray? There he is. He's hiding. Mr. Murray, they're back hiding. I'll see you at Costco, right, Mr. Murray? All right. Again, thank you all for all your hard work and dedication. You will be missed and really appreciate you're not replaceable. But enjoy your future steps in, as you leave the Comac School District.
I'd just like to echo those sentiments there, Mr. Hartman. For many of the teachers on that list, I don't know if I'm really aging myself here, but their career started when I was in high school or middle school. And I was privileged enough to have many of them throughout my educational career. And just, they've all gone on to have fantastic careers. And I've really done wonderful things for the district in moving it to where it is today. So, I thank all of them for all their efforts and everything that they've done through the years.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items as listed, presented numbers two through eighteen? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. And just letting the public know, one of those motions is the school calendar for this year. So, certainly, that will become available after this board meeting. So, very exciting. Next, can I get a motion to approve, this is consent agenda legal? I guess I'll read them separately. Motion to approve the lease modification for the Kitty Care Early Learning Center Incorporated at Longacre School for ten years from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2034. Authorize the board president to sign the same. Can I get a motion? Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the lease agreement with Eastern Suffolk Bosse's at the Old Farms Elementary School for the use of the cafeteria and classroom number seven for the summer enrichment program? Authorize the board president to sign the same. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the first reading of the policies in the Series 5000 and the Series 6000. And be further resolved that the board will waive the second reading and move to adopt the policies tonight. Can I get a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. I have a walk-on motion, which I'm going to read now. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, be it resolved that pursuant to Education Law Section 913, Employee Number 12462, is hereby directed to appear for medical examination before Randall Solomon, M.D. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby directs the employee number 12462 submit at or before the examination evaluation all records for all health care providers with whom she has consulted and/or treatment during the three years or time period deemed appropriate by the district designated physicians. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
I get a second. First, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. There is no new board business. Therefore, I'm going to acknowledge the professional services rendered by Bon Shunokin King for the month ending December 31st, 2024. I'm going to acknowledge receipt of the Committee on Special Education dates as listed, as well as acknowledge receipt of the Committee on Preschool Education dates as listed. I will acknowledge receipt of the Internal Claim Orders Monthly Update, as well as acknowledge receipt of the December 2024, it's listed as 2020, financial reports as listed. Okay. The Board of Education and the Comac Union Preschool District will hold a special meeting on Thursday, February 27th, 2025, at 6:00 P.M. at HUBS Administration Building, 480 Clay Pits Road, East Northport, New York. It is anticipated the board will make a motion for the purposes of a journey into executive session. At this time, it is anticipated that no public action will be taken. The Board of Education of the Comac Union Preschool District shall hold its regular meeting on Thursday, March 6th, 2025, at 6:00 P.M. at the HUBS Administration Building, 480 Clay Pits Road, East Northport, New York. It is anticipated the board will make a motion for the purpose of a journey into executive session at this time. And at 7:00 P.M., which is different times, so at 7:00, the board will reconvene in public session, the purpose of holding its regular business meeting. March 6th, 2024, the board workshop number one will happen immediately following the Board of Education meeting at the HUBS Administration Building. With that, I will turn it over back to the district clerk for public participation on non-agenda items.
Okay. This would be the green card. If anyone has a green card, number one.
Nicole Goldstein. I'm a resident and I have two kids in the district. To the retirees, I know some of you are here. I know I speak for so many parents and we just want to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts for always supporting and caring for our children. Your kindness and dedication have meant the world to us and we are forever grateful. So, congratulations. I would like to discuss the models of the eight and the 12 in the middle school levels. I think when a parent discusses the option to move their child from an eight to a 12, they have the perception that the 12 is curriculum-based here in Comac, which it's not. It is a life skills-based program starting in grade six. While I do think some students benefit from that model, I do feel that the 12-1 structure should be expanded to include an additional model alongside the Life Skills 12, with this new model focusing more on grade-level curriculum. The 15 only meets the need of a select few children and it doesn't give the students that are sitting in an eight the opportunity to integrate into that setting for a curriculum because it's such a huge difference in ratio and ability. The student, for students with disabilities, life skills are the foundation upon which they build their future independence and success. It's about providing these students with the tools they need to navigate the world around them. This includes practical skills like communication, problem-solving, personal care, financial literacy and social interactions. Having a life skills curriculum accessible to parents is critical and crucial because it enables them to actively support and reinforce the child's learning at home, fostering consistent and collaboration between school and family. By adapting and publishing an updated curriculum, we can ensure that it meets the diverse needs of our students and keeps pace with change in technology, society and workforce. It's essential to create the curriculum that is flexible, inclusive and relevant, offering each student personalized support to maximize their full potential. Additionally, a published curriculum ensures consistency and equity across schools so that no matter where a student is, they have the access to the same quality of education and opportunities. This empowers educators to teach with clarity and it gives families confidence that their children are receiving an education that prepares them for a fulfilling life. In conclusion, updating and making the life skills curriculum available and accessible isn't just a step forward. It's a commitment to ensuring that all students, regardless of ability, can thrive, become more independent and contribute meaningfully to their society. I just wanted to, again, express my gratitude for the hard work and dedication that is put here in every day in Comac, but because I truly know how hard it is and I look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Ms. Berger?
Green card number two. And number three. Anyone else with a green card?
Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Can I get a second? All in favor? Have a happy Valentine's Day, everybody, tomorrow and enjoy your February break. Take care, everyone.